Okay, I'm just gonna have you state your name and then we'll go through the questions.
Shawn Douglas.
Alright Shawn, why do you want to be on the school board?
Well, I was born and raised here in Madison. I was actually born at NEO Hospital, which is now The Lantern. My parents, my grandparents, and my great-grandparents were all raised here. I'm raising my sons here. My older son Colin was, he graduated two years ago and he was class salutatorian. And I'm very proud to raise my kids here in Madison and I want to make a difference in my community. And I've had a lot of experience doing so. On the Madison Library Board where we're filming today. As well as throughout the county where I've had a lot of public board experience. So, I want to bring those experiences and my knowledge to the benefit of the community in which I live. So that's my answer.
Okay, second question, please describe your understanding of what a school board member's duties and limitations are.
Well, the school board has two employees primarily. They are the superintendent and the treasurer. We hire both and we oversee them. I as the school board president currently am the primary contact for both of those positions. And I have a lot of impact with dealing with both of them and their roles. However, they are responsible for the day-to-day operations of the school district. So what a board member does not do is get involved in the day-to-day operations of the school district. Just as I didn't when I was on the library board. Didn't get involved there either. The important part is to remember that you set policy and you make sure that the policies are followed. So those are the roles and the limitations as I see them for those two positions. You didn't ask about the library, but I mentioned it.
Okay, question three, how should the schools handle COVID-19 and its variants moving forward? This includes masks, vaccines, and online learning options.
I've been pretty clear that I'm opposed to masking as a requirement in Madison or in any school district. I think it's a parent's choice. We're a year and a half, almost two years into this, I think. I don't think that should be a requirement, neither should vaccines. We did offer a vaccine clinic, so just as much as I got beat up for having a masking optional policy at the schools, I got beat up for having a vaccine clinic in the high school a few weeks ago. I thought the vaccine clinic was appropriate. It was optional. It required parental permission from the parents who chose for their students to participate. And I think masking should be optional. I think this is gonna turn into something that's very similar to the flu year-on-end. And we should encourage folks to get continually vaccinated. I'm vaccinated, my wife is vaccinated. I've encouraged my kids to get vaccinated. But having said that, I'm not for optional vaccines or optional masking policies.
Okay, question number four, how will you help to improve the school district's financial situation, including grant writing, lobbying the legislator, and alternate funding sources beyond traditional property tax levies?
I've already done that for years now. I've, along with our superintendent, we have met with our state senators to encourage them to to adopt the Fair School Funding Plan, which they did. The Fair School Funding Plan is a significant improvement to school funding overall. It basically puts into perspective what it costs to educate a student and then funds the district. Our district is in the bottom 5% of school districts in the state of Ohio in per-student revenue. That's a very simple number. Add up every dollar you get, divide it by the number of students, and that's your per-student revenue. We're in the bottom 5%. We are an impoverished, poor school district. And this new funding plan that the state has put forward, which we have advocated for for years, is now in place. I think that will be a significant improvement and I think it will drastically reduce the need for school levies. And I think that's where our efforts need to be put forward. Asking for grants is a great thing, but those are generally seed money. That's money that comes in initially and they say start a new program and then give it, you know, a few months and then, or a year, or two years, and then the money dries up and they say you fund it yourself. Well, we don't have a lot of extra money in this district and we're not going to. That's my answer.
Question number five, how schools teach history is a hot-button topic right now. What are your thoughts on how our schools teach history and/or how they should in the future?
There was nothing wrong with the history that I was taught back in the 1980s and there's nothing wrong with the history that we're teaching today. These Critical Race Theory 1619 Project, these new theories are absolutely not anything that we should be teaching in our school district. They are something that only leads to opposition and for our students to, you know, divide themselves into groups that we don't need. So I think that the school, or the, I'm sorry, the history that we taught for many, many years is the accurate history that our nation needs and nothing more.
Question six, the district has lost many teaching and non-teaching positions and class offerings and not progressed with other districts by implementing all-day kindergarten. Why or what would you prioritize to bring back or to add to the schools if money were available?
Well, as I mentioned, being in the bottom 5% of the state of Ohio for school funding is not beneficial in any way to this school district. It's unfair. It's not an equitable distribution of funds. And, you know, certainly, all-day kindergarten would help us. Because certain people leave our district because they go to other districts that surround us that do offer all-day kindergarten. And then trying to pull those folks back into our district, which generates revenue, is not easy. You know, when you've already started in another district, you want your kids to continue in the district in which they started. So that would be my primary goal if I had extra revenue. Having said that, do I think that's realistic that we're gonna have a whole lot of extra revenue to start extra, you know, to add this all-day kindergarten? No, I don't. And, you know, I would encourage our other candidates to be honest about whether they think those things are realistic. I don't.
Okay, and the last question is, why should the voters elect you to the Madison School Board?
Well, I have a great deal of experience on public boards. I was on the Lake County Alcohol Drug Addiction and Health Services Board for four years. I served as their secretary, their treasurer, their vice president. I was on our Library Board of Trustees here in Madison for 12 years, 11 of which I was president. I was appointed to the school board and then elected to the school board. I've been on for six years now. And I've been president for four. So I think my leadership experience speaks for itself. I have a great deal of experience. And I would encourage voters to consider experience when, you know, they're talking about who they want to lead their school district.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Thanks.
Alright, hi, can you state your name, please?
Hi, I'm C. Michelle Hayes.
Alright, Michelle, I'm gonna go through the questions here for you. So question one is, why do you want to be on the school board?
Well, I am currently a seated member on the school board. This is actually my 12th year. And I'm looking forward to hopefully serving four more years. I not only, do I have, I feel like I have the heart and the passion that it takes. Sometimes this is a little bit of a difficult job at times. And can be disheartening at times, but it's also very rewarding. I enjoy giving back to my community. I have two children that graduated from Madison. I have two more that are high schoolers, also attending Madison. And then I have two grandchildren that are in the elementary schools. So I definitely have a vested interest in Madison schools. I've resided here. I've owned my home for 22 years now. And it's a great community and I want to continue to serve.
Okay, question two is, please describe your understanding of what a school board member's duties and limitations are.
Sure. I've been to excessive amount of trainings over the years and they always touch on this topic. Basically, a school board member ideally, what the School Board Association would like you to do is only set policy and procedures. Basically, you have two employees that report to you, the superintendent and the treasurer. You set goals and guidelines for those to follow. However, I personally feel like the school board is what we can, what we choose to make of it collectively. If we choose to bring aboard a committee, a board committee, if we choose to serve in other ways, we can do so if we choose to. But our primary goal is to set policy and procedures. Or I should say our primary responsibility is to set policy and procedures for the superintendent, the treasurer, the district to follow.
Question number three, how should the schools handle COVID-19 and its variants moving forward, including masks, vaccines, online learning options?
Okay, well, I'm sure as you know, as many know, that I did vote recently in favor of masks. My vote for masks was not because I agree or disagree that they work. My vote for masks was solely for the purpose of education. We had too many kids missing too many days of school as a result of coming into contact with someone that had it. So for me, that is, a primary goal is to keep kids in school with an uninterrupted education. I think that vaccines should be made available, but not forced upon anyone. Certainly not children. We will have another vote, November 23rd, I believe, where I personally do intend to vote to remove the masks. However, I do need people to know that it could be only temporary. We need to see what it does to our quarantine numbers and what it does to how many kids we have missing school every day. Online learning needs to be an option, obviously, in case something happens where we unfortunately have to get shut down, closed down, whatever, you know, you wanna call it.
Okay, question number four, how will you help to improve the district's financial situation, including grant writing, lobbying the legislator, and alternate funding sources beyond the traditional property tax levies?
Sure. I actually recently attended a grant writing conference. My goal in mind with going to that conference is I was looking at the lecture hall at the high school, which is in dire need of some assistance and some repair, some upgrades. And realistically, we just don't have the money to do it. So not only did I attend that grant writing conference in hopes of getting us some money to do that, but hopefully other things as well. We do have several shared partnerships right now. We share services with other districts. We're members of many consortiums that help us with purchasing power and things of that nature. Absolutely, we will continue to explore other options like those. And hopefully continue to do, you know, the most that we can with the money that we have. I brought a couple figures with me today because I want people, I'm hoping that people will watch this and get an idea because people hear $36 million budget. And they think, oh my gosh, how could you not live within that budget? Our average payroll every two weeks is $683,000. Our cost to operate per day based on 260 days a year is $124,600. So I think that we do very well with what we have. But I do certainly hope to be able to bring some dollars in to do more. Okay, I'm done. I'm sorry.
Okay, question number five, how schools teach history is a hot-button topic right now. What are your thoughts on how schools teach history and/or how they should in the future?
Well, I think that history needs to be taught traditionally and factually. I don't believe that it should be taught any different than how it's been taught. Yes, there are parts of history that are difficult for some people to tolerate, but those have to be taught as well. So although there are some sensitive subjects in history, it all has to be taught, but it has to be factual and not left up to interpretation.
And question number six, the district has lost many teaching and non-teaching positions and class offerings and not progressed with other districts by implementing all-day kindergarten. What would you prioritize to bring back or to add to the schools if money is available?
Okay, key word that I want everyone to hear when answering this question is if money is available. Ideally, there's so much that I would love to bring to our school. In the 12 years that I've been on the board, we are down about 85 positions. And that's not just teachers, that's support staff, that's building maintenance, things of that nature. And includes teachers as well. When I first got on the board, we had multiple foreign languages. We now have Spanish. All-day kindergarten is extremely important. It's needed, it's wanted. The difficulty is finding how to fund it continuously. And when I say continuously, because if we happen to get a grant, when that grant money runs out, you have to be able to continue to fund it even though there's no more grant money. So yeah, all-day kindergarten is absolutely something that I would love to see our district have. As well as the different foreign languages. We used to have, we still have woods. We used to have metals. Unfortunately, our classes in woods have been cut significantly. Our metals teacher was let go many years ago because we could no longer afford him. It's just, you know, we used to have a fifth grade band. Many things that I would like to see brought back to our district. I think our kids deserve as much, if not more, as other districts have.
Okay, and the last question is, why should the voters elect you to the Madison School Board?
I have knowledge and experience. I have the heart. I have a thick skin and you really need a thick skin for this job. And I'm determined. I don't get frustrated and walk away. So I'm asking people to please vote for me and give me four more years to see what I can do.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, can you state your name, please?
I am Toni Rogers and I am running for Madison School Board.
Okay Toni, first question is, why do you want to be on the school board?
Well, first of all, I'd like to thank everybody for taking the time to actually watch these videos since we couldn't be live. I originally chose to run for school board because of the unanimous decision that was made by the current board to put 6.99 mils, property tax onto, onto the, oh my goodness, I'm drawing a blank, onto the ballot in May. And they also spent $21,000 to do so. And 6.9 is a pretty strong, very heavy levy that was going to affect a lot of people. We, what happened was, the, we had, the school board had asked for 12 mils of additional property tax in less than five years, which kind of raised, placed the school board on the community watch list. So at that time, we, I did all the research and found that we had plenty of money and that was completely unnecessary. So we educated the voters and the levy was soundly defeated. And at the end of the day, we now have almost $11 million in excess cash, just as I had predicted. I believe that there is plenty of revenue in the schools for a quality education. And I also think there's just too much rubber stamping going on and not enough questioning of the decisions and the proposals that are set forward by the administration. I think there's also a lack of transparency. And an example of that currently would be the financial report that was given to the community that in June of this last year, it is incorrect. I literally cannot get a straight answer relating to revenue from the treasurer. And he, of course, directly reports the school board. We don't, I believe that if I am chosen to serve this community in November, I will guarantee transparency, fiscal responsibility. Living within our means will become the norm. We don't need to place additional financial pressure on our property owners, seniors, young homeowners, or renters who rents do go up when property taxes increase. We, oop, done.
Alright, second question is, please describe your understanding of what a school board member's duties and limitations are.
Well, the school boards are charged by the community. They're voted in to assure that the school is managed well by the superintendent and the treasurer and our children are receiving a quality education to prepare them for adulthood and eventually contributing to our community. The board members need to ask the right questions relating to administrative requests and not just rubber stamp everything the administration advises. Curriculum is set by the state, so that's really a non-issue. Review and adopt policies and allocate resources to support teaching and learning. That's really, really important. Encourage an innovative learning environment. You know, let's, let's think outside that box. Analyze failures, for instance, the dropout rates, how we're not serving the kids. And then allow people to come to you and ask these things. And when, should I be chosen to be, to serve this community? When there's a levy, if, but I see, this is kinda jumping ahead to the other questions. I do not see any need for property taxes moving forward because the state has stepped forward and state funding is increasing. And this is the big fallacy that we are, we are up against. And I will be, I can guarantee you that I am the only school board member that has said there is plenty of funding. Everyone else says there's never enough money. Currently, we have $38 million for this next fiscal year to educate 2,700 kids. That is a lot of money. That's over $12,000 a kid. So that's all.
Question three, how should the schools handle COVID-19 and its variants moving forward? This is including masks, vaccines, and online learning options.
Well, it just, you know, I've had 40 years of research training. First, my, my background is in science. I can't let, I can't forget all that. Known preventative, hand washing, staying at home when sick, social distancing, sanitizing, face coverings, these are proven to work. I don't, I don't care what anyone says. The data is all there. The goal is to keep our kids safe and the schools open to teach our kids in person. That is our goal. But they must have safety and they must have consistency. Studies show that preventative is work. Let's be honest, the parents have a harder time with masks than the kids do. I believe that the children's health should never be used as a political pawn as it's being used now. Public health has nothing to do with personal freedom. And by the way, following disease prevention does not make me a sheep. We are a community and we need to look out for each other. That is what patriotism is about. Keep not only ourselves, but others from getting sick or dying. This is a pandemic. It's very, very serious. I'm done.
Okay, thank you.
I gotta take a drink, sorry.
Go ahead.
Oh, this is a good one. The next question is very good.
How will you help to improve the district's financial situation, including grant writing, lobbying the legislator, and alternate funding sources beyond the traditional property tax levies?
It's a very exciting time in school funding. I believe we have plenty of money to give our kids a quality education. As I stated earlier, it's $37 million for 2,700 students. That's over $12,000 per student. Funding of schools by property taxes was ruled unconstitutional in 1997. Voters in this community suffer from levy fatigue. This past June, because of everybody lobbying the legislature and the fact that they had to address the Deroff decision, that's what the unconstitutional decision is, they came, they stepped forward and it was bipartisan. Everybody did their work and they did increase our state dollars, which, which, which is good. And that's why we're at this, this amount, plus COVID funding. There's, there's other sources. But this, this source, this one from the state is gonna be coming at us over six years and I think we're gonna be in a solid, very solid financial position. Plus, we have further development in the area. We have reappraisals of the property. This will all help the district's bottom line. I don't see us, I honest to God, I actually, I actually see the shift coming where property taxes are no longer the major stakeholder in the funding of schools. I think it's gonna be, the state is gonna step up and they will take the burden on. It's very, the figures are very, very close. The other thing that I would do is I would eliminate wasteful spending. I mean, let's, let's, let's look at this. Eliminating special elections. $21,000 is the average of what we pay. That is just, that's just not, that's just not fiscal responsibility when you spend money for a special election. It just isn't.
Okay, question five, how schools teach history is a hot-button topic right now. What are your thoughts on how our schools teach history and/or how they should in the future?
I just wanna tell you, it's very hot right here. But anyway, and this question is very hot also. Educators need to teach, okay? And they need, educators need to teach history accurately and honestly. You can't revise history because it makes you uncomfortable. For instance, the reason I can sit here and run for a school board position is because of women having the right to vote. It took 100 years for women to get the right to vote when the 19th Amendment was passed in 1920. Women were beaten, dragged down the street by their hair, arrested and starved. Should the suffragette movement be eliminated because it included violence against women and that makes us all uncomfortable? Is that, is that what we're gonna do? We're just gonna start revising history? What, are we gonna have a paragraph of history? That's what it's gonna end up. So I support educators who teach history accurately and honestly. That's what we have to, we have to have that. We can't, we can't have things that makes us, make us uncomfortable just changed because that's what we feel like doing. We just can't.
Okay, question number six, the district has lost many teaching and non-teaching positions and class offerings and not progressed with other districts by implementing all-day kindergarten. What would you prioritize to bring back or to add to the schools if more money is available?
Well, first of all, there is plenty of money to do all these things. Like I said, I'm gonna be the only, only person that is gonna come away from that saying that. Because it's always constantly, we need more money. $37 million, I think we've got plenty of money. What we need to do is look at the positions that were eliminated, why, and then determine where the most critical areas are. This is completed with employee endpoint, not input, not just administrators. For instance, with the current pandemic, school cleaning should become a priority. We should be really super clean with our cleaning. And I know that they have cut janitorial staff and cleaning after the kids eat. I know, I know all those positions have been cut. And you know what? If we have to raise the wages, we do. Because I've looked at some of those salaries. They're $8, $9 an hour salaries. You're gonna have to raise those to get people to do that work. All-day kindergarten needs to be implemented. We were promised, I was on that committee that did the, for the new schools. We, we built, we had put that in there that we were gonna put, make the building so that all-day kindergarten could be implemented. This is way overdue. That was, that's how many years ago did we build these schools? What the community wants, all-day kindergarten, and we should get it. We need to increase utilization of Auburn Career Center for students who qualify. The trades are dying for kids, I mean, for employees. And what better way to get out of, out of high school with a really, really good job? I mean, we're talking $50,000, $60,000. Is it a pipe drain? No, it's not a pipe drain. A lot of kids do it. It's just not, they don't market that enough. And the other increased, increased utilization of post-secondary for students who qualify, that's another one. You could get out of high school with an associate's degree. You know how much money that would save? They pay for your textbooks and everything. My time is up. Thank you, Madison.
Okay, and our last question is, And our last question is, why should the voters elect you to the Madison School Board?
Why, that, that wasn't on the list, was that on the list?
It was in the email.
You stinkers. Because I would, I, I think I would be a good choice. I'd be an advocate for the voters. I'd be advocate for the kids. That's, you know, and, and the thing is that I can see both sides of everything. Even with all the controversy about the masks and all these things that are going on, I can still, I understand both sides of things. It's the 20 years I spent as a paralegal. I've learned that. But we, at the end of the day, we have to do what's best for the community. You can't vote in levies that's going to put so much pressure on our seniors that they're worried about whether they can continue living in our community or the property owners or the renters. When you make, when you make a decision on the school board to put a levy on the ballot, and the other thing, you don't spend money to put the levy on the ballot. You, you need to think of the whole picture. You need to take, think the 39% of kids that go to our schools that are living in poverty. You have to think of all those people. And that's it. Thank you. I hope you vote for me.
Thank you. Hi, can you state your name?
My name is Jeff Thompson.
All right, Jeff, I'm going to start with question one here. Why do you want to be on the school board?
Been a proud resident of Madison since 1998, almost 23 years. I would like to be a representative to the families of Madison here. I have had the privilege along with my wife of 28 years to raise two boys here in the Madison School District. One is a proud graduate of Madison High School in 2020. Our other one will be graduating in a few more years. Been very impressed by the education that our sons have received. I currently own a recruiting company called the Jericho Group here in Madison. I find jobs for people. I talk to corporates every day and I understand what they're looking for in employees of the future. And I can use that experience that I have the last 15-plus years to make our students successful. I also have had the honor of being a substitute teacher here for the last five years. I've worked along the students, the administrators, our teachers. And hearing their heartbeat, I understand what they go through daily. Unless you're in the trenches hearing them, you just don't get that feeling. And I have that experience. We have some great administrators and great teachers. We need to provide the most resources for our teachers so they could be successful to make our kids what they need to be. I have been on the school advisory board the last few more months. I have served as the PAC president at the middle school, hearing the heartbeats of our other parents in working to make our schools successful. I believe in the future of our children and I believe I can make a difference.
Okay. Question number two. Please describe your understanding of what a school board member's duties and limitations are.
We're a representative, advocate for the community. We establish visions and goals for the school district. We're, we are, we're making policies, laws, regulations. We evaluate the district's administrators and superintendents. We adopt a budget and we work within the budget. And mainly, we are a representative of the community and an advocate for the students in the school district.
Okay. Question number three. How should the schools handle COVID-19 and its variants moving forward? This is including masks, vaccines and online learning options.
The decision to force students to take a vaccine or not to be masked or unvaccinated or to wear should be a choice of the parents. I do not believe that is the responsibility of the school board to make that decision. I believe it's also responsible for each one of us in the community to make sure that our, we're doing our part to keep our kids in the school buildings daily.
Okay. Question number four. How will you help to improve the district's financial situation, including grant writing, lobbying the legislature and alternate funding sources beyond traditional property tax levies?
I'm the only candidate that is endorsed by our state representative, our state senator, and also our county commissioners. I have a relationship with them. I will make sure that I use that relationship, that they understand our needs here in the community, especially on school finances. We need to work also to be more transparent with our community on our budgets and so forth. I do not believe in levies every years. But I believe that we need to provide the proper resources to our teachers, make sure our buildings are being upkept properly and that we're offering the best programs that can make our kids successful. I support us getting as many grants as possible out there. We have had a successful science teacher at the high school that has implemented some grants and made our science program one of the best in the area. None of us is like to spend money. I certainly don't. I vowed to be a fiscal hawk for our district in making sure that your money is being spent where it needs to be spent correctly.
Okay. Question number five. How schools teach history is a hot button topic right now. What are your thoughts on how our schools teach history and/or how they should in the future?
Shouldn't that even be a discussion? History should be taught exactly how it's occurred. Classrooms and the classroom lessons should never be influenced by a teacher or the person that is writing the curriculum for their political views. CRT is wrong. We should take pride, go back to where we take pride as America. We live in the greatest, freest nation in the world. I encourage our, my own children that we need to respect veterans. We need to stand for our flag and we need to support our law enforcement. I will not cave in making history politically correct. Our country has learned from its mistakes. There has never been a better time for us to unite as a country and also as a community.
Okay. Number six. The district has lost many teaching and non-teaching positions and class offerings and not progressed with other districts by implementing all-day kindergarten. What would you prioritize to bring back or add to the schools if money is, if more money is available?
Fully believe in kindergarten. We need to give them that opportunity right from day one to teach, need to learn from our teachers. We need to make priority to find the space for them, to provide the budget for them. And we need to find the teachers that are going to teach them and stuff. We need to provide for our teachers. I'd like to have us implement more STEM programs that will help our students become successful in the future. And one of the things that's strong in my heart is I'm very much pro-trade. I have talked to a lot of people in the trade industry. And I, they need, our students need to be exposed to them that they can come in and tell them what's going on. And maybe these are careers that they can get into. Our nation needs people in the trades badly. And we need to bring people in that will expose our students to be successful. I'm asking for your vote on November 2nd. And I will promise to make a difference in Madison and do the best job for the community. Thank you.
Okay. And the last question is, why should the voters elect you to the Madison School Board?
I offer experience. I've been a resident for a long time here in Madison. I understand business. I've worked in the school as a substitute teacher. I've worked on committees. I understand the heartbeat of the community, I believe. I believe that we need to be working with you. We need to be transparent with you. We need to hear your heartbeat. We need to make, work along with you, not against you. We need strong leaders. I believe I am a strong leader and that I can make a difference. And I ask for your vote on November 2nd. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right. Can you state your name, please?
My name is Brian Horabath.
All right, Brian, I'm going to start with question number one. Why do you want to be on the school board?
Well, first I wanted to start off with, even though I'm, I'm on the ballot, I don't have anyone running against me, but I felt that I owed it to the citizens of Madison, at least to participate in this video session so they could understand my stance on things and my beliefs and what I would, how I would represent them on the school board. The reason I want to be on the school board is that the company I work for, we do a lot with local communities, including Madison, both financial and also participating in things such as career days and manufacturing days. And I thought it would be a logical best step to continue trying to support the Madison local schools with me coming on the school board. My wife and I have been residents of Madison for almost 17 years and we have four children in the Madison School District. Our youngest is seven, our oldest is 14. So, we have a lot of skin in the game when it comes to decisions that are made on the board because the decisions that I would make impact myself as well. And I want to make sure that I'm, you know, representing my family and the people of Madison the best that I can. And that pretty much sums up why I want to be on the school board.
Okay. Question two. Please describe your understanding of what a school board member's duties and limitations are.
Well, for me, the school board is a liaison between the people and the school district. There's the superintendent and the treasurer that report to this, to the school board. And it is up to us to hold them accountable for making the best decisions for our students and therefore their, the parents of those students in the school district. You know, when we have meetings or we're talking amongst each other or with the people of Madison, we want to make sure that, you know, we're making decisions that are in the best interest of mainly the students, but therefore it also ties back to the, to the parents as well. And making sure that the children are getting the best education that they can have.
All right. How should the schools handle COVID-19 and its variants moving forward, including masks, vaccines and online learning options?
Well, recently, back in September, we voted on a mask policy for the schools. I did vote yes for that mask policy, even though I'm not a person that is a large proponent of masks. The reason I did that or voted yes was because the regulations or the recommendations from local, state governments and agencies are showing that, you know, in terms of quarantining, what we have to do or what we should do for quarantining. And when you have masks on the children, it streamlines that. And it doesn't make it so that way there's large groups of kids that have to be quarantined if a child is sick with COVID. So, for me, going forward, we're going to, you know, as a board member, continue to monitor what those decisions or recommendations are. And as soon as they're more streamlined for kids staying in school and not having to be out of school for a long period of time, that's when I would support not having masks in school. I believe it is up to the parents to decide in a perfect scenario, what is best for their children. It's just in this case, with those recommendations and regulations for the ma, or for quarantining, I'm sorry, that wearing a mask makes it more streamlined. So, rest assured, we are watching it closely from my perspective and that the first opportunity that comes about, I'm hoping it's soon, that we can change and have it up to the parents again for their mask, or their masking of their children. I am 110% for that. Again, decisions that I make impact me as well. And I don't like my kids having to wear masks either.
Okay. How will you help to improve the district's financial situation, including grant writing, lobbying the legislature, the, and alter, and alternate funding sources beyond the traditional property tax levies?
Well, first of all, I'm a conservative. Since being able to vote back in 1992, I've always voted in that, or with that perspective in mind. I don't like taxes. I know many people that I talked to don't like taxes. And the way Ohio has set up their school levies. And I know we recently put one on the ballot this year. And the reason for that was in an effort to make sure that the kids are properly supported, no matter what pathway they're taking, whether it be college, military, work after school, trade school. My goal is to make sure that all those pathways are supported. Right now, you know, my mindset would be that we go to the state and local governments and try to look for grants and those types of things in lieu of raising taxes in order to support the kids and having enough electives for them, proper sporting and extracurricular activities. So, that's what I would do is try to help push for getting grants and doing other things prior to having to raise taxes on the taxpayers in Madison.
Okay. How schools teach history is a hot button topic right now. What are your thoughts on how schools teach history and/or they should in the future? Or how they should in the future?
I grew up in Brookfield, Ohio, which for those that don't know where Brookfield is, it's near Youngstown and very blue collar family I grew up with, traditional values. And to this day, I maintain those traditional values. And I am 100% against critical race theory taught in the schools. And I'll make sure that, at least from my perspective, that the traditional way that we teach history is what I'm going to support.
Okay. And the next question. The district has lost many teaching and non-teaching positions and class offerings and not progressed with other districts by implementing all-day kindergarten. What would you prioritize to bring back or to add to the schools if money is available?
My wife and I have four children in Madison, youngest seven, oldest 14. And all of them went through the half-day kindergarten and I am 100% for the all-day kindergarten for the kids. Also, in addition to that, would be offering additional electives for the high school students. That way, it can support them on their different pathways, either college or trade school, military, go-to-work-after-school, whatever those different pathways are that we properly support them. And then lastly, would be supporting our athletes that are in Madison and working with the other board members and residents of Madison, businesses that try to improve our athletic facilities at the, or at Madison. For example, the tennis courts are not very good. The track needs work. The field, I travel to many other fields with my kids or sporting events, you know, trying to get a more upgraded athletic facility for Madison. That would be on the list, last on the list, but still on the list, with the top two being all-day kindergarten and more electives for the kids to try to help keep them busy, but also learning so that way they're prepared after high school.
Okay. And the last question is, why should the voters elect you to the Madison School Board?
Well, it's an honor to be elected to the school board. I'm not sure if everybody knows, but last year I was appointed after Larry Armstrong resigned from the board. So, I was appointed by the board and this will be my first time up for election. Again, I know that no one is opposing me on the ballot, but I felt that it was necessary to express my thoughts and feelings and my viewpoints with the folks of Madison. My wife and I have four children in Madison. We do have skin in the game when it comes to decisions that I help support. I am a conservative, traditional political beliefs. I know my vote for the mask was not aligned with that. However, my goal is to keep kids in school. And the moment that quarantine guidelines change, I will 110% support going back to the parents for having them make the decision what's best for their, for their kids when it comes to mask. I am thankful for the opportunity that the library is giving me to record this video and everybody that's taking part in it. And lastly, go Blue Stripes. and everybody that's taking part in it. And lastly, go Blue Strix.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.